Troy had to bring Melvin, that George Stewart.
George, where's your ponytail, man? Gone, gone.
I'm tired. I'm tired of fooling with it, jumping.
What's going on, bud?
Just hanging out. Yeah, I get tired of fooling with it. And it was strange looking. You know, my hair is so thin.
Yeah.
I'm normally by this time of summer, get my summer cut. I haven't done it yet, but I'm about to. It looks like, will look like rich. There you go. Make it easier. Where's Stewart? Stick around somewhere. Hey Candace, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Doing fine, doing fine. Did you just get a haircut? I can see it in my, I can see it in my glasses, I hate that. I can't find it.
So, we'll start at my place.
I've had a lot of people around here that wish they'd had him the other day when that light was struck. Because it would have prevented a lot of computer blowouts. We also lost a tree line.
George, you cut that hair, boy? Yeah, hey, like it or not. Yeah. I was like, I'm tired.
You know, it blew out the control system for the lights on the square, too.
Oh, really?
They're looking at it to see what they have to replace.
I'm making claims on all of our stuff.
Alright, thanks for telling me that, I wouldn't have thought about it. You know, after an accident like that, I say we go with a high deductible for a couple of years. Yeah, you too. You know, I mean, once you got them, you know, and once you hit them one time, kind of figure it's, yeah, close.
Hey Stewart. George, I'll get back to you, go ahead.
Your name and where you come from?
Let's say I went to Wake Forest University. And then I flew to Orlando.
Okay.
And as I'm, as I'm in the air, this is a first, I'm in the air, the pilot comes in and says, ladies and gentlemen, there's a bad weather storm in Miami and all the planes are getting diverted from Miami to Orlando. So, we don't have a game. I gotta turn around and go back to North Carolina.
Oh, really?
So, he flipped around. We went back to where we came from, sat on the tour mat. And then eventually, like, three hours later, we turned, it took off. So, they opened the door and they said, if you want to get up, you can get off. But he goes, just so you know, but there's nobody, no gaze, there's no game. They did that, tried that to the first class.
Is that written here? I'd like to call an order, the regular scheduled city council meeting for Gunnerose, Texas, Tuesday, June 10th, 5:32 PM. If you would, uh, your staff for an invocation, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the wonderful rain again. Lord, we know we're gonna need it down the road, so thank you. Lord, we ask that you take this counsel and guide them tonight. Do the will of the people, to do the things for this city that are good direction for all of us, Lord. We thank you for their commitment and their time, and we ask for safekeeping, all the people here, Lord, and watch over us in everything we do. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
On honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you.
Feel worse the further I get over.
Tell you what.
But there's no comma there, guys.
She's got to quit rushing, man, you're throwing me off. No call, Councilmember Schultz?
Present.
Council, pro mayor, mayor, pro Tim Mann?
Present.
Councilmember Fries?
Present.
Councilmember Brenning?
Present.
Councilmember Mapes?
Absent.
We have a quorum. Okay. I'm gonna read some instructions on anyone that will be speaking tonight. We ask that each individual addressing this city council do so in an orderly and respectful manner. Attempt to address any issues or concerns or suggestions in the public comment section of the meeting. People comments outside of this section will be limited. All speakers shall approach the podium, provide your name and address for the record. Comments from the public during both the agenda items for the public hearings and agenda items for individual consideration will be limited to three minutes per person. Each person will be allowed to speak once, and you cannot give your time to anyone else. Ask that everyone silence your cellphone for the duration of the meeting. Council members intend to give their undivided attention to all speakers, and we ask that you do the same for us. Alright, thank you. Citizen visitor comments. Before we start that, if you don't mind, I'd like to make one comment. We lost a former mayor and a wonderful citizen and a volunteer in the city in Connie Kirk. And about a week ago, unexpected. She was here working with us at our music festival. She's always done a lot for this place, and what a wonderful lady she was. So, send your prayers out to Vern and her husband, and we're gonna miss her, so.
No doubt.
You got anything, George?
No, I said, no doubt.
No doubt, alright. Uh, Mr. Watermill?
Thank you, Council. My name's James Ryan Watermill. The address, 7487 West Highway 67, Walnut Springs, Texas 76690. I'd like to visit a little bit about the proposed encore transmission line. It looks like there's been a propose of three different possible routes in which this line can go. One of them, cutting through the northwest corner of our great county of Somerville. I would like to just make sure that our city, our, our county, everybody is aware of this line and the massive footprint that it is going to take up. We are, as y'all well know, a great county, but we're the second smallest county in the state of Texas. I feel like we've got the smallest piece of the pie to give up. I, I, I think taking this beautiful land and cutting through it, and then, once you realize that it goes right by the dinosaur Valley State Park, man, that, that's a, that's sacred ground. It's, uh, this, this county and city has a lot of unique character to it, a lot of beauty. And this, this transmission line is just, it's gonna be massive, it's gonna be tall, it's gonna be unsightly, but I think it causes some other issues. Again, not professional, I'm not a, uh, uh, oh, just, these are really just my, my concerns and comments. I will tell you that the route is not cut across our land. So, I'm not standing up here as someone who is saying, hey, I don't want this thing going through my land. It's not even the proposed further south, furthest south route, it doesn't go through our land. But there are three routes. Call it the furthest north, which kind of follows the I-20 corridor. Then you have a center that goes right down the county lines. And then you have the furthest south, which will cut through Somerville County. And I, I just, I think, again, everything we've got here, it, it just, it goes against something like this being put in. I, I think it could be a detriment to our school. I think it could be a detriment through property values. I think it could be a detriment to tourism. And I, I literally had a conversation with Troy one day about growth. We cannot stop growth, and we will not stop this transmission line. But hopefully, we can do something about where it goes. But it, it will go in. There's nothing any of us can do to stop that. It will go in. We just need to do what we can to keep it from coming through our county and basically cutting off what appears to me to be a third or a sixth of the county and going right through that northwest line. But I do, I do think there are some financial burdens that can come from this. But more importantly, and I'll be short, but ironically enough, I walked in and I saw our vision statement, right? Gunnerose, a welcoming and unique, family-oriented community committed to preserving our natural beauty and historic small-town charm. This is the exact opposite of that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I can't tell you, I know all the council members are versed, city administrator, our state representative, I've had conversations with her over the weekend about it. We're aware of it, and yeah, I'd rather it be somewhere else myself. I don't mind saying it. But electricity is needed, so it's gonna happen, like you said. Okay, we're gonna go to item number one. And after item number one, and we complete this discussion, we're going into executive session. So, we'll probably be gone about an hour at that point, and then come back and reconvene the regular meeting. So, if I can have staff read that for me.
A public hearing regarding a request for a specific use permit for short-term rental for the guest house on the property located at 307 Walker, acre 0.157, tract F6-2, abstract A136, A136, Myron County, Cool, tract F6-2, to operate in an NCR1, single-family district.
Alright, any councilmembers have any questions or anything you'd like to know about this? Y'all have any questions among ourselves? No, we're doing different, we're going with the state format for this now. We're changing.
Okay.
It's okay.
Your agenda has this as a public hearing.
I know, but my format for doing a public hearing is different now. We're matching with what TML and the state uses. So, thank you, though, Pam.
I apologize.
That's alright.
Are the people that wanted this here, that's my question.
Yeah, that's, it's your location, is it correct? Okay, will you come up and present, tell us what you'd like to do? First of all, go and give your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Eleanor Baldwin. It's my husband, Steven, here. When we bought the house on Walker Street, it needed, it was fixer-upper. And there was a shed there, and there was a carport and a rock wall supporting the carport. There was a tree that was growing under the wall, under the carport, and under the foundation. So, we had, everything had to go. Okay, so, I said to the contractor, can we make something out of the shed? There was a washer dryer, electricity and water in it at the time. And he said, no, it's a chair now. I said, okay. He said, unless you wanna get something and, you know, go shopping for something and put it down. I said, no, we'll fix the house. And that was our intention at the time. And then we went for a cup of coffee downtown, and people that we were getting coffee with said they had a house, they, they had to get off their property, they were selling, they were moving. And I went, hmm, well, maybe that would work, right? So, we decided that it might be a little bit cheaper and faster to fix that first, and then work on the house. And then we could stay there when we had to do work, and maybe we could short-term rental it and get some of the money back that we were spending on all of this. So, we poured everything we had into it. We came into the city, we sat down with Kyle, we told them this is our intention, and we, we absolutely need to add a bathroom to it. He said, okay, he'll check it out. He came out, he measured, he knew what we wanted to do, he told us what to do, he said, you're fine. Every step of the way, we talked, we worked with him. He might have been to our house three or four times, because I was nervous to do something wrong and then have to redo it. So, we worked with him, and then he was gone, and then we had Dennis come out and check. We, we wanted to put a railing, and we wanted to make sure it was right. And he came out, we worked with him, and then he approved it. Then he, I think, did, did some of the electrical, the, the pre-work that you do, he approved that. And then, when we went to do our final, it was just a couple of weeks before we put our papers in for this, we went in and we just said, okay, we're ready to have our final inspection for the electrical and for the plumbing. And that's all, you know, that we have to do. And so, she sent the new, the new guy that's, I think his name was Steve, he's a tall thing guy, new and temporary inspector or something, right? And he happened to come at the same time I plumbed it. And so, he reviewed it with him and walked in the house and out in the back and whatnot, and he said, you're good to go. Said, okay, came back into planning, and I, and I told Jody, you know, he said, we're good to go, right? And she said, yeah. So, I said, okay, well then, we'll put our paperwork in. So, we did that. But then yesterday, I called him to see, you know, what was up, and they said, well, she said, basically, you shouldn't have been approved, and you were. But we know that you worked with us every step of the way. So, you know, and I'm like, I'm done now. And so, what am I supposed to do about, with that information? You know? I'm sick to my stomach over that.
Yeah, can you, can you tell them what you wanna do with it? All the past is the past. I'm sorry, what? Can you tell them what you wanna do with it? Because you're applying for your short-term rental.
I can hear you.
They're applying for, you're applying for their short-term rental. What they need to hear is your intention for the short-term rental. All of the other stuff that you're discussing, they need to hear that plan, too. So, it's, remember I told you yesterday? All of the stuff, you got all your permits, all of that were approved. You're applying for the short-term rental.
So, they wanna know about a short-term?
They need to know about the short-term rental.
Right.
Okay?
Okay, sir. So, basically, it's just short terminal, very low key, it's usually just one or two days. You know, people who wanna experience downtown and be close to, you know, downtown and to the attractions and whatnot. And so, I kind of geared it towards that, made a loft area for kids, dinosaur crossing on the ceiling. And so, you can't make meals there, because we just, it's just like a hotel suite. You have a, a small refrigerator, a sink, we have the separate bathroom, and microwave, you know, and a coffee bar, basically. So, it's just like you would get a suite in a hotel, you know, it's just a little bit bigger. Small sitting area in the backyard. But it's been our experience that people don't come and sit, they don't come and cook. They just wanna bed to stay and, you know, get up and go out and eat their meals and see the sights and stuff. And then they're gone, they're checking in at any time after three, and they have to check out at 11:00 in the morning. It's very short stay. You know, and the reason why we like it is because we can control the property, you know, and keep it up, because we're very into that, improving the neighborhood, keeping it up. We like, one of the things we like about it is old, you know, it's old town, it's mixed housing.
Alright, thank you very much. Anyone have questions for Mrs. Baldwin? Do you have other properties? Do you have other properties that are, that are VRVO or short-term rentals?
We do. We're living with our kids and grandkids right now, we're sharing the house, and we're looking for something small that for us to go in permanently. And there was actually, there was a workshop shed on our property, and when we bought it, it's downtown. It's in the historical area, and so, we made it exactly like the house. It was a garage workshop, so we just changed, put a porch on it. But I, I was more doing it for a guest house at the time, but then the contractor didn't pay his subs and, you know, all that problem, so I had to take on a lot of debt to straighten that out and fix it. He had no money. So, I went to the city, and I said, this is where I'm at, and what are my options with this? And they said, you can short-term rental that. And, and that's it. In Grandberry.
So, just to confirm, what you're trying to look for a short-term rental is for the, I'm sorry, and I have a cold to breathe.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes.
The short term, it's the casita, not been, what's, it's a regular rental property in the front?
I'm sorry, what's a regular rental property?
Who lives in the front house?
Yeah.
The, the main property.
We do.
Oh, y'all live, okay. And that's where you're, you live with your?
Do you have a picture of it, just to bring it up?
Is that?
Oh, well, this is the house, yeah. I thought you were talking about Grandberry, I'm sorry.
So, do you live, no, we don't get, we're, we're pregnant in Gunnerose. So, this is your residence, correct?
Yes.
And this is, this is what you're, you're interested in being, being?
This is the home you share with your, you said you're living with your?
We can't, we, no, they're not living in the house permanently at this time, because they need to renovate it.
She explained, she explained that you're renovating that home where you're going to live permanently?
Yes, we are.
Alright, thank you.
We do stay there, we can't, quote camping out, because you know, there's, there's no washer dryer, there's no hot water. There's things that we can't do, because we need to find a place to put them. So, we want to stick with the shed first.
Alright. Any other questions, Stuart?
How far away do you think you are from living there full-time? I mean, just like six months, a year, three years?
Well, I never thought this would take as long. I mean, unbelievable how you plan, and it just doesn't work that way. I'd say a year for sure, but when, when we rent, we will be there, because it's to our advantage, and it works really well, so.
Any other questions from council? Alright, thank you very much. Alright. I'm now gonna open the public hearing section of the meeting. Public hearing at five, six, sorry, 5:50 PM. We have, uh, anyone would like to speak concerning this? Sherri Luther?
Yes. My name is Sherri Luther, and I live at 400 Jefferson, here in Gunnerose. I've resided at that house since 1981. My neighborhood's a very, very old neighborhood, my house is over 100 years old. It's a quiet neighborhood. Most of the houses that are around this house are elderly people. me included. And, hey, hey. I just really don't prefer having a B and B right next to my house. I think Glen Rose has adequate accommodations between the hotels and all the other B and Bs and cabins and whatnot that we have around here. I'm also interested in knowing if you can have two residences on a lot that small. Because I have a quarter acre. I could put a whole village of those little cottages on my planks. But I don't think the neighborhood would appreciate it much. Anyway, I'm just opposed to it being there because I've lived here a long time and I don't feel like every inch of the town has to be tourist attractions. I think we should keep some of the town sacred, at least certain little pockets, you know, because the charm of Glen Rose is quickly disappearing because of all the commercial things that are here. I understand there's going to be growth, but not all growth is necessarily productive or good. Everybody talks about the charm this town has, but I feel like, you know, we're losing it. We're losing the charm because of a lot of things. But anyway, I just don't want a B and B that close to my home. And I don't think that the long-term renters, which is right next, there's a long-term rental house right next to theirs. The last couple that lived there lived there for eight years. So long-term rental doesn't bother me because there's usually background checks and things like that and they have money in the game. They got to stay there and answer up for it. Short-term rentals, I'm not saying they have any problems or that people that rent B and Bs, because I've rented them myself. I'm not saying they're all bad. I'm just saying we don't have to have it in every inch of the town. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else have comments? All right, we're going to close the public hearing section of the meeting on this item. Now I'm going to ask council if you would consider item two. Bronco, will you read that out for me?
Discussion, consideration and possible action regarding a request for a specific use permit for a short-term rental for the guesthouse on the property located at 307 Walker, acres 0.157 tract F6-2 abstract A136, A136 Mylan County School Land tract F6-2 to operate in a R1 single-family district.
All right, thank you. Council questions, discussion? You saw the letters that went out, I assume? Looked at them. Pam?
For PNC's presentation?
Yes.
This, a day before planning and zoning at our last meeting, you will see that the commission actually did recommend 341 against. However, they were contingent on making sure that all the permits and everything that was previous fund or discussed was actually in line and approved and whatnot. And what we found is that the, the shed that was put in was not, was an accessory shed. And that it was put in not as a dwelling, that the setbacks are not, don't meet dwelling standards. But permit was pulled, permit was approved. Electricity and water permits were pulled or approved. Through the discussion and the paperwork that was passing back and forth, it was obvious that some type of dwelling was going to be put there. Permits were pulled, permits were approved. Whether that was right or wrong, we can't change it. So the three that were recommending for an SUP went on that basis. I will tell you, one did oppose. And not because of the permitting issues, but because that is a thoroughfare to the school. And we've had previous discussions where we do want to say some neighborhoods are absolutely appropriate for B and Bs or Airbnb's. And we'd like some to not have to be Airbnb's. But even more than that, the bigger problem with this is that this is two dwellings on one plot in an R1. And that, you're now on a gray area of what is allowed in an R1. Using it as a guesthouse for family, friends, the mother-in-law. We all know that happens. Using it as a rental and making income production off of it in a property that is truly an R1, when every other B and B that has been approved for an R1, it was the main property itself, the house. That's why there was an opposition. Ultimately, the commission recommends it moving forward. But to get the full story, I wanted you to know how we got here.
Hey, Pam? Discussion?
So I have a question about the email that came from staff that talks about the conflict in the current code. That says, our current code restricts R1 lots to no more than one dwelling per lot, but then the use table allows a guesthouse. Is that part of this as well? Is that, that, the?
It is.
The use table?
The use table allows a guesthouse, not a rental income-producing. But that's an interpretation and we don't have a definition in the guidance, in the ordinance for the guesthouse.
Of a guesthouse.
So that's where it becomes gray area for you guys to have a.
Anyone else have a question?
Lori, sorry. I don't have any questions, but I do have a very big concern that if, if there was going to be denials that should have been brought forward to the property owner, you know, two years ago when they started this process so they didn't invest time, money and effort into completing this project, for them to have a large expense or, you know, to create this building, that they should have been addressed as a no beforehand before they invested this time, money and effort. Is that's where I'm going with that?
Pulling permits, and I'm just going to state this, pulling a permit and getting approved permits for the construction while wrong and wasn't done according to what our ordinances were is one problem. But nowhere in the discussion was a permit pull a guarantee that a short-term rental would be allowed. That's, a permit pull allowed them to build the dorm.
But had it been communicated to PNC that that was the intention?
Never went to PNC for permit pulls.
But, but she had conversation with code?
She had conversation with code officials, whether or not that, whether or that the discussion on this was going to become a short-term rental, we have one person against people who are not here. So we have to assume, we know, based on the files, we know that the discussion was this was going to be a dwelling. We can't attest that it was discussed whether it was going to be a short-term rental or not. And I just, clarity on, we don't know that that came up in discussion because we only have one side of the conversation for that. The documents never mentioned short-term rental. The documents were all about, it's going to be a dwelling.
Okay, let's continue with this discussion on the dais. Anyone else have any other comments? I, I do believe the city is incumbent upon the city to make clear and to delve into that and make sure we know what's going on and what's happening. We want to be consultative in everything we do.
And that is why the commission pushed forward the recommendation.
Can I make a comment?
Very quickly.
When I first started this, I said, hey, how are y'all? Carries myself and I'm like the governor. Anyway, they told me that it was going to be a guesthouse for family. That's what they told me.
Thank you.
A what for family? A guesthouse for a family?
We didn't know.
Okay, let's, let's.
We could do, we were thinking and then we proposed it.
Okay.
Because we, we had options. We came into the city to find out what we could do.
All right, thank you, Ms. Baldwin.
And we stated, every time we were there, every inspector knew exactly what we said.
Thank you. Counsel? Any action? I don't have any action.
Look, I don't, I don't see how we could hold back on someone who got incomplete information regardless of it. We, we got ourselves in a he said, she said kind of situation where you don't have, we don't have anything concrete that says this was communicated forward. And we have allowed SUPs in R1s in other situations. Now, granted, not for a, an accessory dwelling unit like this has become. We could make the, we could make an SUP contingent that there is only one property on this or there's only one dwelling on this property that can be used as a short-term rental. And the second one has to be a residence. Then we don't have two STRs on one lot. And I'm a, I'm a strong personal property rights advocate. Now, have we got ourselves into a position where we're going to, you know, be, be boxed in for the next opportunity? Yes. But again, we, we have granted SUPs for one domicile into an R1 area. So based on that, I would make the motion to approve the SUP for 307 Walker, that there is one STR on this property. That's my motion.
We have a motion.
I'll tell you, I looked at this email that you reflected where it says a building permit was issued on 8/11/22 to install an accessory building to be used as a single-family dwelling. So to me, that, that makes it very clear that it was going to be used as a residence, whether or not short-term or family or for family members. So I, I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Three all against, one against?
Lori's online.
Is she online?
Did she vote?
What was, which one was hers?
Are you against or for?
She's got a hand up.
Oh.
Lori, we're, we had a vote. We asking for all in favor? All opposed? Can't tell?
She is in London.
Yes, I'm, I'm saying yes.
Okay, the statement is, so the motion passes and the, will be allowed. So, thank you. We're going to close the regular city council meeting. We're going to go into executive session for about an hour under section 551.071. We are going in personnel matters to deliver an appointment, employment or evaluation of an event or of a CBB directive. So we're going to have that. We should be done in approximately an hour. We hope to do it quicker. Thank you.
What do you have doing in that white house? That they, that was yellowed, that they painted white?
Yeah.
Is that where Nick Hollinger used to live?
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Yes. I'm going to buy that house, by the way.
We are, we are doing one item in executive session?
One item and coming back.
Okay.
You have one short-term rental on property. The other one has to be a rental.
Oh, my God.
What is it?
What's going on, man?
Lot of stuff here.
Did you send the email to Marky?
No. Good. Yes, I will.
Yeah, she went away shortly.
Okay, all right.
Got a couple of those clean texts, please. Coaster for my tea.
So Doug, uh, you know, you send me a text and tell me what time Thursday, okay? All right.
Okay, it's cold.
Third morning. Clean your hot pants. How are you?
Okay, where are we there?
We're up or not a little bit.
Okay, we're gonna call the regular meeting back into session at seven fifty P. M. And an executive session, we covered one item, item number seventeen. We're going to direct staff to continue negotiations regarding the C V B and business director position and move forward with the, uh, the parameters we gave. So we're out of the executive session, back to regular session. We're gonna go all the way back up to item number three. Discussion, consideration, and possible action on the approval of change order number one to T X C B B G C D V two, three dash zero, one, three, three, with M L contracting increasing the contract amount by eighty-six thousand, four hundred and one dollars and seventy-five cents for additional street reconstruction work on Second Street. You wanna talk to that, Jim?
Sure. So as y'all know, y'all awarded that, that contract back in April. So, um, because the job came in under bid, I mean, under what we originally thought, um, there's a hundred and some odd thousand dollars left over. So, um, we are willing to increase the scope of work. We've identified some areas that need new paving, um, on Second Street. So the curb and gutters there, we would just mill and overlay with, with new asphalt. I think it was eighty-six thousand dollars worth of additional work. Because it's over fifty grand, y'all have to approve it as a change order. Once that happens, they'll, they'll mobilize and get started. So kind of what we're waiting on to, to make sure it's approved by council and the T V A.
All right, any questions?
The eighty-six thousand was all grant funds, correct? Or is that, or is that?
That's correct.
Are we gonna have to match that eighty-six also?
We, it was a five hundred thousand dollar grant. We match, uh, five percent. I think it's twenty-five thousand. Um, all this additional work would be covered. So if we run into something and have to have a change order, we would, we would probably do that work and reduce the eighty-six thousand dollars worth of paving so that we don't have to spend more money out of local funds.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ready? Any actions?
Make a motion to approve Winrose C D V twenty-three dash zero, one, three, three change order in the amount of eighty-six thousand, four hundred and one dollars and seventy-five cents.
I'll second.
Second by, may I approach him? All in favor? Four? Passes? Thank you, Jim. All right, item number four, discussion, consideration, and possible action on approving resolution two, zero, two, five, dash, R, dash, zero, eight regarding the first financial signatories. Veronica, you wanna talk to it?
Oh, just, um, housekeeping, taking Dimitra off and adding Stuart Van and our new deputy C. S. Secretary to be able to sign.
Any questions? Your motion?
I move to update the signatory cards with first financial twenty, and resolution tw- two, zero, two, five, R, dash, zero, eight, uh, to remove Dimitra and add Stuart and?
Cassandra.
Let's see if we can.
Cassandra.
Send Cassandra. Thank you, sorry about that.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fries. All in favor? Four, zero, passes. Item five, discussion, consideration, possible action on approving resolution two, zero, two, five, dash, R, dash, zero, nine regarding the Interbake Signatories, same story. So moved. Have a second?
So second.
Councilmember Bruning, all in favor? Four, zero, passes. Item number six, consent agenda. All consent items can be considered under one motion if you don't have individual items within it that you'd like to consider. Anybody make a motion to consider all three items?
I'll move to, uh, approve all three items in the consent agenda.
The second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Schultz, all in favor? Four, zero, passes. Okay. Staff reports. Uh, Public Works Director?
I don't, I don't have anything to add. Well, actually I do. We, we interviewed, um, for a position over in maintenance and it looks like he's gonna start on Monday, so hopefully that pans out. We haven't had good luck recently, so.
Where did you find him?
He's actually moving here from the city of Gatesville. He's currently employed with the city there in Streets Department, so soon as he gets moved over here, he's ready, ready to go, so.
You're just down to one position?
Well, if he works out, we'll still have at least one opening. We could actually.
On your notes, you say you got two interviews coming up. Is that, that's separate, though? That's different?
No, that, that was, he was one of those.
The other one was a no show. Okay.
As our favorite sidewalk project going. Northeast Bernard?
Which one?
You can start with that one.
That's the one I'm talking about, too.
Okay, so the same contractor that was awarded the street project was awarded the sidewalk project. So he, he hasn't mobilized yet because we were waiting on the change. They're all the way from San Antonio, so on, once this gets going, he said he'll bring a, a separate crew for that and they'll get it knocked out within forty-five days, so.
So what, what's holding it up, again?
This change order that y'all just approved.
Oh, okay, okay.
They didn't want to mobilize and then, and then demobilize and come back and board, so.
That's wonderful.
All, uh, all easements are assigned. It's gonna be all the way down, everything squared away, buttoned up.
Yes.
All releases were signed.
Yes, all the ones we were working on have been signed.
You hesitated, why do you hesitate?
Because we ran into some, when we went to, to file those next door, uh, they said those aren't original documents. They did a, a test where they just smear the ink or try to, and so we're still working on a couple of those. But we're, we're gonna move forward. I'm not gonna not put the sidewalk in an easement. We'll, we'll get those filed and get that worked out.
For us people that signed don't know we have that issue, so. They're okay.
Oh, they do know.
Sorry.
Hesitated, I was like, hold on, wait a second, something went sideways.
Okay. Anything else for Jim? Thank you.
Jim, when, when does the water car pump supposed to come out? Or you know, what's that? When's the water car pump supposed to come out?
Our quarter.
As soon as we power restore. We'll be breaker panels, engine, and transformer, Texas, New Mexico.
You ever tried?
Has speed reports, too.
Time frame on that? Guesses?
No, I mean, as soon as possible.
Speaking, speaking of Texas, New Mexico, can you just make a note, can we get an update on what they're planning to do there on Cyclone Street where they put the, the pole right in the middle of the sidewalk approach? And they came back and they said, we're gonna do something with it. Let's get Tech Scott involved. And do we have anything at all?
Last time we were, we were working around it.
Oh.
Putting in a, a, a ramp that goes back towards sixty-seven and switch back.
Switch back and come up?
Chief Martin.
Yes, sir.
Anybody have a question for Buck?
Y'all are doing a great job when it comes to those weekends and the burn fit.
Yeah, on Saturdays, though.
Really?
Yeah, it's worth the job.
Wow. Yeah.
I don't know if you all are aware of it, can you just give us a briefing on, on Colby off-duty activity that I talked to you about?
Wants to save that till next week.
Really does? You wanna save that till next week?
I mean.
Well, let's just wait till.
Okay.
Yeah, it was wonderful, wonderful off-duty action, so we'll cover that.
Thanks, Stuart.
But congratulations to you and your staff, you're doing a good job. Thank you.
Uh, Building and Planning Department. You have any specific questions here?
No.
Steven, anything we ought to know about?
No, sir. We've started the animal shelter. They finally got out and started saw cutting. So that project's starting to rock and roll.
Yeah.
And we've got adoption event this weekend, too.
How long are they gonna be having the officers there?
We're looking, if everything goes accordingly, month, month and a half.
All right, nothing else? Thank you, Steven.
Thank you, sir.
We don't have any code enforcement or animal control. So, um, C V B?
Yeah, I wanna show one spring, Veronica, which one would be the best one?
That one?
This?
Yeah, that corner is, open up the thing.
You'll see. Keep John giving.
This is great. This is, we can. Okay. So this is the downtown square and this is Placer AI. So a couple of things, you can see that last day, what a big jump we had, which was the music festival. And then you can see the last twelve months we're, we're trending very closely to what we were in twenty-twenty-four, which was, again, twenty thousand over twenty-twenty-three, so that's a good thing. So so far this year, we're not losing people that we gained last year, which was plus twenty, right? So that's an important number right there. Um, and again, this, we've talked about before, but highly concentrated around events. So we'll see if we can continue to, the increases across the board instead of arch spikes. So, but that's a good number, uh, 'cause it was three days worth. And that tells you, uh, yeah, that's really weird. Mine's different.
What happened on that day that shot up more than the Plexi Music Fest?
See, this is.
Is that the last day of school?
I think it's when my family came to town.
That's where, this one's through June first, so I'm gonna pass this one around. Okay, this is the, the one the day before, so it wasn't captured in both days. This one is a better example, 'cause it's through June first, right? So you will see, what you see on this one is the visitors on the downtown square for that day approached four thousand visits, which is a lot. Now, again, somebody, you gotta think about how their measure, credit card, um, so somebody could have.
Used twice.
Used it twice. Yeah.
I even smiled by six.
That's a really good example.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay.
Here. Can you pass these around, please? That's, oh.
Let me go that round first.
Uh, the second one I was gonna show real quick is what we looked at when we bought this, and I did the twelve-month period, was that everything was here. So what we talked about was that we needed to cast our net a little wider. So we needed to be advertising in Houston, in Austin, San Antonio, even in Waco. And so what you're starting to see here a little bit, and again, April first through March thirty-first, is that we're getting a little bit of hits in further away places. And, um, coinciding with that, J C couldn't be here, but he wanted everybody in the house. He had his best May he's ever had in nine years, forever. And what his numbers are showing, that his, his occupancy is around about kind of what it was, so forty-five to forty-eight, forty-nine percent. But what's really shot at is his average daily rate. So he's able to command a higher number, which is good. That's a lot of different reasons, right? Could be that everybody's kind of maintaining higher numbers, so they're not shopping five different hotels and finding one that's thirty percent less than everybody else. As long as everybody kind of, you know, sticks to that plan, then the average daily rate will stay high. George.
That's called collusion, but that's not what we're doing.
When they're not talking about it.
It's not collusion.
It is not collusion to look and see what other people's rates are, not lower your rate.
So one question I had for J C in that conversation was that his occupancy is almost the same. And as you said, he's getting more room rate. And I said, how do you offset that to the, your increased cost for food and fuel and everything else that you're faced with during the inflationary times? He hasn't come back with that number yet, but it'd be interesting to know what that revenue, is it going over what his cost increases were?
Yeah, I mean, he had, he had told me, 'cause, um, I asked him, the question was, well, you know, does it make sense to lower your rate to try to drive up the, um,
occupancy, knowing that if I've got, I've, I've got a set of maids and I'm just gonna use maids for instance,
that are coming out and they can clean more rooms, I get better efficiency, right? So what is, what is that number? You know, according to him, if, if you get to fifty percent, everything beyond fifty percent, they can kind of put in their pocket. They, a, a greater percentage of that goes to profits, so that's kind of what we're shooting.
Oh, I'm sorry. It stopped, it stopped. I, I got, I got busy looking at the graph pretty fast.
But this is, this software we got, so good.
All right, thank you. The other document you have is the preliminary revenue figures. We won't close this out for another couple of weeks when all the invoices and everything are done. The fascinating part of this is we didn't sell that many tickets advance online because, don't forget, there was potential weather issues coming up, that there may be in rain. So we sold roughly, the beginning, when we went on sale, the first, first of May through Friday night, we sold eight hundred ninety, we had eight hundred and ninety paid attendees. Saturday alone, we had nine hundred and ninety-one, and there was a hundred people that bought tickets online that didn't show up. So we general, total paid attendance was roughly forty-seven thousand dollars. We made, uh, a little over two thousand dollars in banner ad sales, thirty-eight hundred dollars in vendor fees, estimated revenue of about fifty-three thousand dollars. What we did, we, the people who have the stage. What we did, we, the people who had the stage told us on Saturday night, that was a 2,000-person crowd. We, there were a lot of people that checked in on Friday, that came back through the turnstile. We just didn't have the process set up to do an accurate count of that. We will, in the future, we'll actually reentry gate with somebody with a clicker counting. We'll have a better feel for that, but.
So these numbers of attendance are just.
I'm sorry?
The numbers of attendance per Saturday, because you said for a total of 1,800.
We sold.
But that's just how many you sold on that day, correct?
That's 346 online tickets, that's from midnight Friday until close of business on Saturday. So people were buying tickets before coming to the event.
Awesome.
So that's probably the largest event that's ever been on the square. The largest amount of people that have ever been on the square at one time was on Saturday.
Except when Bonnie and Clyde drove through town.
I'm still waiting to validate that, I'm not sure about that. But anyway, so this will give you a better feel on Jack Johnson.
That's great numbers. I, I'm, I'm very pleased and surprised, too. That's a lot of ticket sales.
It is a lot of ticket sales, and a lot of people came from, you know, we, like I said, we haven't run really the the numbers to where they came from. We had a lot of Stevensville people, and we have people that are driving through town that walked up to me and said, we didn't, wow, this is great, where, how much are tickets? And we told them, I mean, that Aaron Watson at Billy Bob was $75 to $100 a ticket. So we were doing it for $25. So, anyway, just want to give you these numbers, we'll close it out in the next 30 days and have a detailed report.
Good. We look forward to it.
Thank you, sir.
Veronica? You have anything? I know you have a few things.
Well, it's on my report, but I would like to personally and publicly thank Lupita, Cassandra, and Joe for all of their excellent work at the Plexi Music Fest. They went above and beyond, and I'm just super proud of them for just their enthusiasm and their cooperative work and just the team atmosphere that they really instill here. So I just wanted to publicly thank them for that.
It actually appeared as though y'all were having fun.
We were having class. Yeah, we were. We were having a good time.
Anything else you want to cover?
No, I think there's some upcoming, Larry has an upcoming work anniversary, so that's exciting for him, two years. And then we're just continuing with some core training in my department. I have, we finished our customer service training. We've all participated in cash management training. And then I've set goals for each of the the ladies to be able to take their job to the next step, so like Joe's going to take her exam to be a level one municipal court clerk next month. And then Cassandra's going to finance, she'll be doing some finance training with the acronym GFOAT. And then Lupita, we are going to do some higher level customer service training.
All right, thank you.
Wonderful.
Before Troy goes, I don't want to leave anybody out. Jim, your guys are always there, the trash is gone. It's, it's like, I, I wrote in my article that after an event, you wake up the next morning, is it, nothing happened?
It's clear.
And it's incredible. Stuart, I mean, a lot of people were there, picking up, cleaning up, putting the trash away, and it's done that night. I, I, I just can't believe how good a job they do. And, and security, we had little to no events of any kind, crime-wise. Stuart got one tussle, but other than that, everything was pretty good. So what a great, great team teamwork we had there. All right, Troy, I'm done.
Yeah, I will, I will say this. You know, I worked with a lot of public works directors around the state when I was with Aqua, and this guy is as good as anybody I've ever met. So we take him for granted because he's so reliable, but he's a pretty amazing guy. Oh, were you still here? All right, so just quick, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time. Obviously, May was a great month, because bake dumping, we've been looking forward to this. It's everything that we kind of thought it was. First time we brought it before you guys and said, it's a draw to the square. And that's good for everybody. So it's, it's exactly what we hoped it would be. So, and kudos to her, because it looks fantastic. And her food is absolutely phenomenal. She's a great business owner and a, a real good addition to the city. Grumps, talking to Lindsay, they're looking for additional parking around there. Their store is outpacing any other Grumps for opening to where it is now. So fantastic. Just to give you an update, we're almost there on our park grant application. The surveys are in, now we've got to do some, I mean, the response surveys are in. We've got to do an actual survey and kind of package, package it all up. But very, very close, which is good. And he feels great, this is public management. They feel great about our chances, so this guy knows. He's very good. That was drainage. You can use it for a drainage study, it's from the land office grant.
This is separate from our parks.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep, although you can use it for a parks master study.
Because they're also doing the parks one, right?
Uh, no, not the same company.
Okay.
But you can use it for a parks master plan in addition to drainage plans. So there should be money left over for that. Talked about ADR, there is interest from our friends in Burleson to come to Glen Rose. So we are talking to a building owner on Thursday, which would be fantastic.
Is, is it downtown?
Yes, it would be in the square, which is great. Wayfinding options, you know, even one of the people that we interviewed today talked about wayfinding in our interview with him today. That's a little giveaway, but. So we're looking at wayfinding again. We've got to iron out what that will look like with Text dot, which is why we kind of held off, because they came up with some parameters that wouldn't allow us to put anybody's name in there right away, which is different than anything we had heard before. So in other words, we could say City Hall or Downtown Square, but we can't say the name of a business, according to them. So, anyway, it would be great if we can have them, though, because again, the idea is to defer people from 67 to the square. JC had organized a group through WhatsApp, and the purpose was, when he got 45 bicyclists or somebody for a big event, then he wants to know, where can I send these people? Where are the restaurants that are going to be open? So we had a meeting here, it's really positive, and I think it's going to continue to grow. Sidewalks, obviously, four sides are now complete. And then I think from this point will be, you know, the side street, maybe, you know, along Bernard by front porch, you know, a wraparound to the corner. Completing the corners, you've seen the really nice-looking addition he's done now at some of the corners at the museum. So to put that around, around the different places in the square. And then, you know, whether we want to go down Bernard by Rhythm and Books and the salon to Herford, that's a question we've got to decide, so. More downtown signage, and then year-to-date numbers. I'm just going to show you one really quick. And that is.
Business group?
I know, right? Okay, a couple of things I look at. Our expense to revenue ratio is, our revenues are a little bit ahead of where we were last year. Not that much, but it's good to be in the plus side. And then the revenues to expenses are still looking really good for the year. So two of the more important numbers that we're looking at. So that's it, that's what I got.
All right. Question? Stuart?
Yeah, the date's off the back of the mural.
The date is off the back of the mural.
When's the new date going on?
As soon as I get it.
I can do it. I can do it. Okay, any council member reports? Anything you'd like to announce?
I have a couple of things. We have upcoming, the Text 21 meeting, did I send you that email to send everyone? Okay, okay. So if you, Zoom call webinar available, I believe it's a two and a half, three-hour block. It's really good, it's going to be a good meeting. So just kind of a wrap-up of what happened with the legislature as it relates to the initiatives that we have put forward with the Text 21 working group. And then I went over and listened in on the Encore presentation about the transmission line, and Mr. Lottamill is correct. You know, there will be some impact, not necessarily to the city of Glen Rose per se, but to us as a community broadly. And I'm going to try to work on a, a resolution that, to present back to y'all, that we would oppose option number A3. So if you were there and you saw any of it, that's a, that's a bad option for the city of Glen Rose broadly and Somerville County. So some of the reasons are because, like he said, it surrounds Downwater Valley State Park on, basically on two sides. It impacts their primitive campsites and the people who use the, the acreage out in the back country around the park. It's a tourism impact for us, and, you know, really, it, we don't necessarily want those power lines any closer to the city limits than they already are. So the, the more northernly route out of this proposed dinosaur switch is a much better option than bringing it to the south and impacting us. So those are just some of the things that we've discussed at that meeting. They intend to file their application for a CCN in December. They are in the process of taking comments, basically. They've still got an email address that's open, and I'll share that with y'all, that you can, you can hit them with some emails and some questions or comments that, you know, basically, you know, we don't want this A3 option. And it'd be good to kind of mobilize some efforts to, for other people to repeat the same thing. And then they hope to have a decision from the PUC by June of 2026, and then they would begin construction maybe as soon as 2029, 2028, and hope to be completed with the project by 2033, 34. They expect this demand to pop in the Permian Basin area by 2039, 2040, is the way the study came out. It came, it, it arrived from an interim study from the 88th legislature. They came up with this, they put together three projects, and they're in the, in the beginning phases of sculpting those projects. But only one of them is an Encore project, the other two are south of, well, south of us. So anyway, it was, it was a very informative meeting. They were, they were out in full force, they were talking it up as positively as they could. But as Mr. Lottamill said, it's going to be a huge impact upon these property owners, because it's a new line with a new route and a new switch. Everything about it, they're not going to be in, there, there will be very few areas where they will be in existing right-of-way, because they don't have enough right-of-way for the existing right-of-ways that they, that they could get inside of. Now, they may run concurrent to some of their current high-voltage lines, but that has no impact upon us. It'll be all-new in Somerville County.
Is the one that runs through Somerville County the most direct route for Encore? So it's not?
No, 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 it's not. He, he's, he's right. It, it, it avoids population centers, which, you know, maybe doesn't matter to, say, Stevensville or anybody near Interstate 20. But, I mean, there's the, there's the proposed map that, that they're talking about. The, the, basically, the three routes, there's a lot of legs off of it that come back and forth, but.
And everybody should have got that today in your mail.
Yeah, we did. You got it in the mail.
Yeah, but not a good, not a good, not a good thing.
Something else, George?
No, sir.
Is there another public hearing?
That's it. They had their four public hearings, that was all they were required to do. They had great attendance in Stevensville, it was packed and overflowing. They ran out of supplies, ran out of equipment, they stayed an extra hour longer. Like I say, they were accommodating, but, you know, the days of cities actually having a say in any of this before the PUC are long gone. So now you have to get in on the front end, well in advance of when they make their application, because when they make their application for their CCN, that's their preferred route. And they really don't want to have to deviate from that, and they want the PUC to rubber-stamp that for them. PUC is going to give six, seven, eight, nine months worth of looking at it, but it's probably going to be what they submit. So it's incumbent upon us to move quickly and communicate with them that, you know, there are significant impacts to the community if they move forward with some of these proposed routes. And specifically, the A3 route coming out of the new dinosaur switch is not a good route.
And the email address that you've provided?
Well, you can send it to us all.
Yeah, I will, I'll send it to you. I, I think it's, I think it's called, I think it's maybe dinosaurswitch@encore.com? It was something fairly easy. Is it on there?
Yeah, before I mentioned, there's the webpage, and then there's the.
Transmissionprojects@encore.com.
It's, it's on the backside of your map.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Somebody else? Okay. We're going to close the regular opening meeting, and we're going to move to executive session. Section 551.071, consultation with an attorney regarding interlocal agreements. 551.074 Personnel Matters. For Tuet Event Coordinator. And 551.074 Personnel Matters, City Administrator. And 551.072, deliberations regarding real property on 300 Northeast Bernard. So we will close the regular meeting at 8:30, 8:29. And will probably be an hour. But close, or close?
We came to, Troy and I came to an agreement on that development on Rock Ridge. Do you want me to just quickly address that before we close it?
Let me get this execu-- we'll go back into the regular session, cover the action item, and then I'll let you do that at closing the meeting.
All right. All right.
Took a pen out of there. Here you go. Sorry. Okay. Agenda somewhere. There you go. All right. We're gonna go back in regular session, Veronica, at 9:52 PM. Regular session will now address executive session action items, and the one action item that we have is on, let me find it, item number 19, section 551.072, deliberations regarding real property 300 Northeast Bernard Street, Glen Rose, Texas.
It's 23. It's the same thing, but 19 is executive, 23 is 23.
I didn't have the back page. Thank you. Item 23, as I stated. We will now take consideration of the council to address the budget item on 300 Northeast Bernard. We having discussion?
Now, after review and discussion of the budget, I make a motion that we increase the budget to 2.4 million for property 300 Northeast Bernard Street.
You have a motion? Segmented by Councilmember Brennan. All in favor? 4-0, passes. Thank you. And now George O'Pill explains through Rock Ridge.
Yeah, and I apologize, I should have mentioned this earlier, but Troy and I were able to come to a satisfactory development agreement for Rock Ridge 3 that will tangentially accompany construction work on Rock Ridge 2. We were gonna get a better project than what was originally presented. We worked with the developer to get a, an access point to future development, which was something that I was concerned about, that we were gonna wind up with a stranded piece of property, and y'all asked us to, to come to an agreement and try to reach a development agreement with them. We did. Troy worked on getting the turn lanes in, so now we'll have a dedicated turn lane into the development so that we won't have so much traffic that's trying to turn into the development. But I think we got a good development. I think there's some things that we can do as a city to help improve the look in the area as well, and we'll go over with Jim and their staff to kind of look at it and try to touch base with our engineers about what it would cost for us to kind of make some upgrades to the road there as well. But long and short, we got a good agreement, and we executed the development agreement with the developer for Rock Ridge 3, and they should be turning dirt whenever it quits raining, so.
Well, not this week.
Yeah, not this week. Good job.
Well, I appreciate y'all working on that, getting that done. I think that development is a key development for this area, for this city. It's somewhat affordable housing. I can't imagine getting out of college and buying a $300,000 house, but it is affordable housing, given today's climate. So thanks for working through that, George, Troy, and all you guys. So any other comments? Anybody have anything?
Media adjourned at 9:55 PM. Buck, if you'll escort me home now.